Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening. I know that you've taken time out of your busy schedules and evenings to be with us. Before we get started, I want to extend our most sincere heartfelt appreciation to Second Presbyterian Church for opening up their facilities for us this evening.[53.19][53.19][applause] Pastor George Rockerson never hesitated when I asked him, and he's been extremely gracious in his staff that prepared this room for us this evening. The staff wanted me to let you know that there is coffee and water in the back of the room if you so desire. Before we get started with the program, I would like Dr. David Bowen, staff members, you here at the Second, to come up and pray for us.
And George would be here, but he's out of town, so he can't. But I'm happy to. Let's pray. Great God, our Creator, we bow before you and give you thanks that we can live in Memphis, Tennessee. We thank you for the neighbors that we have. We thank you for the elected officials that we have. We thank you for opportunities like this to gather and to learn, to communicate together. We pray for help to love each other. We pray for your help to find justice in our city and to find freedom, to find flourishing here. And we are grateful that we have leaders who recognize that we don't have all the answers, and so we need help. And we call upon you for help. We pray that you would give them help. We thank you for our new police chief. Pray for your great help to her as she gets to know the area and gets to tackle these issues. Thank you that we can be here together tonight. We pray we would learn a great deal through one another. This we ask in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. This is very encouraging to see so many of you in the crowd this evening. It's encouraging because it shows that you have a lot of care and love for the city and that you want to see the very best for not only your families, but for future families and generations. We certainly, as your Memphis City Councilmen, want to see the city thrive and succeed. We have kids that we want to see stay here and raise their families here. We want to see that we address the issues that you have. We certainly have heard your frustrations, and we have those same frustrations. We have a great new police chief in CJ Davis, and we have...[204.93][204.93][applause] She has our complete faith that she can get the job done. She came in here and hit the ground running immediately. She's got a lot of things that she wants to see done, and she has the same frustrations that you do, and she wants to see this city be a safer place for all of us. What we'll do this evening is my colleagues, Councilman Ches' Carl and Worth Morgan, will speak. Then we'll have, we'll let Chief Davis speak, and her amazing Assistant Chief, Don Crowe, has been a devoted servant to the MPD for a long time. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a great police force, and we have a lot of men and women that risk their lives each and every day for us.[256.14][256.14][applause] I can't tell you how much they mean to me and to the city. And so when you see them in public, whether it's in a gas station or in a restaurant, just a simple "thank you" goes a long way, and they will certainly appreciate it because they take time away from their families each and every day and really do put their lives on the line to protect us and our families. And we have a great group leading this force, and I could not be more proud of this group that we have. So I'm going to be done talking. I recognize Representative John Gillespie in the crowd, and I recognize many of your faces. Again, thank you so much for being with us. Without further ado, Councilman Carlisle, Councilman Morgan.
Good evening. I'll be very brief so we can get to the main event, but it's so good to see so many friends and neighbors that are here as a collective. What makes local government so great is it's the only level of government in which you can truly engage in your future and have a connection with your elected leaders and with your police chief. Councilman Canali said it best. CJ Davis is a tremendous leader and a tremendous executive, and we are incredibly thrilled to have her here. And I know she's likely just as excited to be able to meet and continue to meet members of the community. Don Crowe was one of the best things, I think, just to demonstrate CJ's leadership, promoting him to Assistant Chief, as she is coming from Raleigh to promote somebody that's so well-respected amongst the rank and file and has such an institutional knowledge, I think just shows great leadership in and of itself. While it's great to get together, it's certainly unfortunate that it's hard to acknowledge why we're here. There's no question that across the United States and the city of Memphis, we have a serious issue with crime and lawlessness. And I wish I could tell you that there's a magic wand that I can wave, and tomorrow you wake up and it's all gone and fixed, but that's just not reality. What I can tell you, though, is that this body and my colleagues are absolutely committed to putting any resource forward that we can in order to support our police department as well as the community services that are necessary, absolutely necessary, to change the outcome and the trajectory of the path that we're on today. It's critically important that those conversations happen in tandem. We know that we need more police officers, but we also know that we need more resources and we need more volunteer hours, and we need more people engaging in taking back their communities, and so we are committed to doing that. I really appreciate everyone being here. It just dawned on me, by the way, that not only is this Second Pres, but it's PDS, back in these hallowed halls here together. So thank you again for being here, and I'll pass it off to Worth Morgan.
Thank you all very much for coming, especially Councilman Carlisle and Canali who organized this event. I didn't intend to be onstage this evening. I was going to be out in the crowd with you all, listening and supporting my colleagues and hearing the feedback, but I'm glad I had an opportunity to share with you all some of our visions, some of the troubles we're running into, and some of our hopes for the future. And I think that, I've said this all along, that the number-one responsibility of any government is the public safety of its people, whether you're the federal government, the state, or the local, and it's a responsibility that I and we have taken very seriously. And the victims in Memphis deserve justice, and the community of Memphis deserves to live a life free of fear, where they can live in peace and with purpose, and we haven't always provided that, and it breaks my heart, and I'm sorry. I'm a protector by nature. It's one of the reasons I signed up for this job, and I know there's some others up here with me that feel the same way, and I thank them for their work. We are, I believe, trying our hardest, but that's not enough. Sometimes we don't always get the results that are needed. We've lost friends. I've lost friends. I've had friends, family that was victimized, and it hurts, and I know a lot of you in the room feel the same way, and I'm sorry. I think what you'll see going forward and you'll hear tonight is that we don't anticipate any one of us having all the answers. This has to be a community effort. This is a time, as Councilman Carlisle was alluding to, for local heroes. We know, in terms of our responsibilities in Memphis, we talk about the police force, we talk about enforcement, we talk about holding people responsible for the actions they had, but as a community, there's something greater, and that we have to be involved in the beginning, and that we know it's about the service hours. We know it's about giving back and getting involved in these people's lives well before they make the wrong action, and even after they do, giving them an opportunity to come back, because, look, 95, 98% of the people that we arrest are getting out of prison at some point, and that meaningful life of purpose and peace, we want that for them too when they have that opportunity. But tonight, I think you're going to hear a lot more from the enforcement side. One of the biggest troubles, you hear it over and over again, is the shortage of police officers we have. They have been working themselves tirelessly, I mean, to the bone, to the point where we have exhausted that resource. There is not a lot more overtime that we can pay and feel comfortable about not wearing our officers too thin. We have to get more police officers. There's a residency initiative that is in front of the state that I'm very hopeful will pass next year that will expand our recruiting pool by about 40% in the local area, and we want to get officers in here who heart is in the right place and that they're committed to getting the job done, and that is going to be a big, big step, and it takes a long time to build our police force back up. We're about 2,000 officers now. Everybody agrees, even almost everybody in the city council agrees, it should be 2,400. There are academic reports that say it should be 2,800, and that helps with investigative services, with domestic violence, with violent crime, with the investigative bureaus and the homicide detectives, that when somebody does commit a crime, that we can bring them to justice. So I've already shared too long, I know there'll be answers and questions to come, but thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Believe me, from the bottom of my heart, this is an issue that we are working on, and we are with you too. We are with you too. And feel free to stop us anytime. This is what we signed up for. See us at Walgreens, see us at church, send us an email or a call, and I know you've got some committed people up here that'll be there with you.
We're going to hear from Chief Davis, followed by Assistant Chief, Don Crowe, and then we're going to go to a question-and-answer session. We'll probably go through the next 40 minutes and let them give a presentation and speak. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, please give a warm welcome to your new police chief, CJ Davis.[734.30][734.30][applause]
Thank you all so much. Thank you for that warm welcome. It is always good to be in the house of the Lord.
Amen.
Yeah. So first of all, I want to thank these passionate elected officials that you see standing up here. Please give them a round of applause.[775.19][775.19][applause] And I want to thank them for having faith and trust in me to come to Memphis and do this monumental task of leading the Memphis Police Department. Also, I want to recognize, I see Ben from the Crime Commission. We were together, he's standing in the back, and all the work that they do with the Crime Commission. We appreciate you being here as well. And to the community members and other concerned citizens that are here tonight, I want to recognize Assistant Chief Crowe, who has been my partner in crime.[814.82][814.82][applause] He's been my partner in crime. He has served well over the years and is highly respected, and it was a part for me to make a decision to appoint him as the Assistant Chief of Police for the Memphis Police Department. And of course, I have other leaders in the room, and I'm just going to take one minute to do that, because they say every great leader doesn't create followers, they create more great leaders. And we have great leaders in the Memphis Police Department. Deputy Chief Wright, raise your hand. Don't be scared.[855.69][855.69][applause] And Oakley is here as well. And of course, I see several other individuals. I'm not going to call everybody out, but I certainly appreciate them. And our police attorney is here as well. This is the person that keeps us out of trouble, Zay Salim. Say hello to him. And of course, to the rest of my staff that are here, thank you for your support. We can't do this work unless we're together. All the wheels have to be moving at the same time, and we have to work really closely together to get our job done, but we can't do it by ourselves. We have to have our community members to help us. And with the numbers of individuals that have come out tonight to talk about and discuss the concerns that we all have in the city of Memphis, this speaks volumes for what we can do together. So what I decided to do is we prepared a presentation for an earlier meeting, and we want to share that same information with you tonight. And it's really a bit of an overview that goes over some of the challenges and the concerns and the year-to-date numbers that we're experiencing as it relates to Part I crimes and what we consider are more serious and violent crimes, and also a little bit of information about recruiting, some about some of the drag racing that we've seen in the city, and then I will provide a little bit of information about some of the meetings that I've had, you know, outside of, you know, my normal Memphis government meetings with the state and on a national level. So I know I have a slide clicker over there. I may have to turn around a little bit. There we go. And then really, the next slide is just a slide that illustrates the various stations throughout the city. You may not be able to see them that well, but we always include that so people can get an idea of where our different stations are situated. Go to the next slide so I can jump right into some real statistics, and you may seem to turn it around, but forgive me for that. So last year and this year, you know, we're looking at Part I crime totals, and these are 2021 totals year-to-date, and that black line across the screen, that illustrates 2006 numbers. That's when crime was really at some epic numbers, and as you can see, the red line, it illustrates 2021. The blue line illustrates 2020, and the purple line, 2019. So you can see that crime has ebbed and flowed. At the beginning of the year, we saw a bit of a dip, a considerable dip, compared to 2020 in the month of February, and then we started seeing some spike. We started seeing spikes in March, April, and then May, and then last month, then June, we started to see some of our crime numbers sort of level off and come down, and that's Part I crime. So we're slightly below, at the end of June, we're slightly below where we were last year at the end of June, and that's kind of what we want to do. We want to continue to see Part I crimes and violent crimes move down. Next slide. So as you know, one of the most recent phenomenons is interstate shootings, which is something that I haven't seen in my entire career, but it is not just a phenomenon here in the city of Memphis. Other major cities are starting to see more and more brazen acts and violent activity on our interstates. So we've had 77 interstate shootings in the Memphis area. In June, we had 12 incidents, but most of this has been occurring in the Mount Mariah area, that corridor. And to try to abate some of that, what we've done is we've increased visibility, increased our officers and presence in that particular area, not just on certain shifts, but on all shifts, because we've seen this type of activity around the clock. So there were 83 total interstate shootings in 2020, and we're already at 77. So we're on track to have twice as many interstate shootings, and that's why we decided we were going to implement an operation that's going to last a few months, that will start in the next couple of weeks. Some of you may have seen the press conference that we did this week, and that was to bring our Tennessee Highway Patrol along with our Shelby County Sheriff's Office, who has been very receptive to supporting us, but to actually have an opportunity to sit down and talk to the newly-appointed Colonel, that is the individual that's in charge of the entire state, to come to Memphis and sit down and have a talk about not just a one-and-done operation and put a Band-Aid on it, but how do we work together to have sustainable change in our region on the west side of the state of Tennessee? And so in that conversation, I was very optimistic that there had been some commitment to assigning more troopers in our area, which that's what we really need, because many of our Memphis police officers spend a lot of time on our interstates. And when you have larger numbers of individuals racing and reckless driving, they're going to have larger numbers of accidents, and our officers are responding to a number of accidents out on our freeways, and unfortunately, we are up also in fatalities. And that's when things get really serious, when individuals are driving so dangerously that lives are lost in the process. So next slide, please. Okay? This is basically a map. I'm not sure how well you can see it, but you might be able to see it a little bit. The concentrated area on this map is really down on the south side of the city, that Interstate 240 corridor. That's where we've seen a lot of interstate shooting and activity, and that's on the Mount Mariah corridor. Next slide. And this is really just part of the campaign slogan that's already in place, Slow Down Memphis. And we plan to have more of an enhanced version of Slow Down Memphis by having more visibility, employing technology in the future to include cameras, license plate readers, and license plate readers are not so that we know who everybody is on the freeway. The only time a license plate reader will ping for an officer's attention is when that license plate reader reads a stolen tag that's in the system. If your vehicle isn't stolen, then there won't be a ping or an alert for an officer to respond, but there are a lot of stolen vehicles in our area as well, and some of them are not necessarily stolen out of Memphis, they're stolen from other cities. So we plan to utilize license plate readers to try to identify some of the stolen vehicles on the freeway as well. One thing you will notice, too, is that there are a lot of counterfeit drive-out tags. Everybody has a drive-out tag in Memphis. They say, "I know all these cars can't be new."[1361.21][1361.21][laughing] So there's cause for alarm in that as well, because if the individual has a counterfeit drive-out tag, then he's trying to cover up some other illegal activity. Sometimes the vehicle is stolen, sometimes there may be some other reasons that he might be participating in other illegal activity. It doesn't want the officers to know exactly who it is that's in that car. So we plan to crack down on some of the counterfeit drive-out tags as well. So the next slide, I think, move to the next one after that.
Car takeovers.
Yeah. So this particular slide, you may not be able to read the numbers, I'll just share them with you. This one covers arrests, tickets by MPD, weapons recovered, vehicles seized or towed, and we've had over 943 interactions just in the North Main Station area as it relates to vehicles being involved in some type of illegal activity. There have been 27 felony arrests, 30 misdemeanors, 57 misdemeanor citations, total traffic citations were 737. 14 handguns have been recovered, and 15 vehicles were seized or towed for whatever reason, whether or not they were involved in some type of illegal activity. 14 of them, 15 of them have been seized. Next slide. And just so you know, guns recovered, we've had a 35% year-to-date increase in guns recovered in gun arrests. There's been a 28% year-to-date increase in the number of gun arrests. So there is an affinity for guns, not just in our city, but all over the country. Everybody wants a gun, but unfortunately, 60% of the weapons that we seize off the street are stolen from some legal gun owner, either a weapon that was left in a vehicle, a weapon that was unsecured in a home from a burglary. That's how we end up getting weapons off the street. So we advocate for Second Amendment rights, but we want our citizens to be responsible gun owners and secure your weapons, and that's how, I know people ask all the time, "Well, how can we help?" You can help get that message out, because I know nobody in this room or anyplace else would want their weapon to be used in a fatal crime where somebody's life is taken, and that happens on a regular basis. So we are trying to educate, inform, and educate our community members on how to be legal and responsible gun owners as well. Next slide. Let me see where I am. Now, these are just, you know, some pictures showing that guns stolen from motor vehicles alone, 60%. Those are weapons that were just left in a glove compartment someplace, handguns. And guns stolen, 39% increase as well. These are just some images of those that we have taken off the street. This next slide basically shows that red bar, and that red bar shows that there are 812 guns stolen in thefts from motor vehicles for 2021, and those 812, if you think in terms, we're only halfway through the year, and then last year we had 1,324. If we double that number, then we are well over by the end of the year, but we're going to be educating folks and asking people to please secure your weapons. But that's an alarming number when you think about that many guns out on the street. Next slide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about recruiting. Should I pause for questions now or keep going? Keep going? Okay. All right. Okay. So our goal is to hire 2,300 officers by December 2023. We are about to kick off a very robust hiring campaign, and yes, we're excited about it too. And I know people are saying, you know, people aren't interested in law enforcement anymore, but yes, they are. There's still a lot of criminal justice majors, and I think there is great opportunity for us to utilize our staff and other city employees and our community members to encourage individuals to apply with the city of Memphis. We plan to enhance our sign-in bonuses. Even though we provide a sign-in bonus for our new officers, that amount of money will be going up, because we've been provided some federal funds to help us with recruiting. So we're really excited about the fact that we're going to be able to offer not just the bonuses, but relocation bonuses too for individuals that are qualified individuals to come from other states and other jurisdictions to be a member of the Memphis Police Department. So we're excited about that, and we plan to continue this aggressive recruiting campaign. They're going to begin it, they actually began July 1st, and as I said, we have some additional goals, and that is to make sure that we have enough officers on the street that we don't have to operate utilizing overtime funds. Our officers should not do regular routine work in an overtime capacity. We should have enough officers on the street so that we're not burning our officers out, that they're not experiencing fatigue and making bad decisions. This is not the kind of work that you would want officers spending too much time, you know, in a high-stress type of situation. So the increase in numbers will help us to staff our precincts and put officers in places in a highly visible capacity to deter crime, to have more individuals actually working in a community engagement capacity. Just visibility, soft presence, and officers getting to know the community in itself is a deterrent, but when they're running from one call to the next, they cannot provide the level of service delivery that our citizens deserve. So recruitment is high on our list right now. And we also... And we also want to hire aggressively so that we can ensure that we meet our attrition rate. There's always natural attrition. You have officers to retire. You have officers to separate because the wife got a job someplace else. You have officers that go across to the other side because they think the grass is greener. Believe it or not, a lot of them come back. Yes, they do. So I don't get bent out of shape when I see officers leave to go to smaller jurisdictions. Because to tell you the truth, I want the officer that wants to work in a large, demanding jurisdiction. Because that's the guy who's going to get out there and do the kind of work that we need our officers to do. Unfortunately, that's the type of city we have. We also want to make sure that we pay our officers what they deserve and retain our officers. We want to be competitive. And I said it earlier, if our officers work as hard as a Chicago police officer, they should get paid like Chicago police officers. Personal privilege, thank you. And I'm sure they agree too. So moving on to the next slide. This is just a little few figures on attrition. As you can see, for 2021. Let's go to the next slide. Yeah, there we go. So as you can see for 2021, that green line, we have had forty-one officers to retire, forty-one to resign. So we're at eighty-five. And then for other reasons, there were three that separated for other reasons. So we're at eighty-five separations already. So we're on track to be at a hundred and sixty or so if this attrition rate continues this way. And as you can see, the last time we were at the one hundred and sixty rate was back in 2014. But last year was a tough year. We had COVID-19. Everything came to a spin. There was no recruitment fairs, no job fairs, no going to colleges and recruiting, no going to exit briefings at military installations, no travel. So we had absolutely no real hiring last year. But when you have a year that comes to a complete halt, then you have attrition that goes up and you're not filling that hole in the bucket. So we're climbing out of a situation. And of course, things, we're hoping that are going to get better as it relates to us being able to recruit more. But we still have to always have a robust recruitment campaign because you always have natural attrition. Next slide, please. And so just a little, I think this is the last one on recruiting. We graduated forty-eight new recruits last week. We had a wonderful graduation. We're glad to see forty-eight more officers go out on the street. That took us up to two thousand and thirty-eight officers. But we're still going to be pushing for that twenty-three hundred mark. We start a class on August 2nd. We will start another one January 17th of 2022. March, we'll start a class. July, we'll start a class. And then actually, we'll start a Blue Path class as well. Our Blue Path is our young people coming out of high school or in their first couple of years of college. And we prime them, get them ready for joining our police department. It's an opportunity for them to work, learn a little bit about law enforcement, and then gradually matriculate into our police academy. So we plan to start a Blue Path class in July as well. Next slide. And some of the next steps, basically to maximize our social media reach, to also look at our training program, to make sure that our training and recruitment is adequate and relevant to streamline the recruiting process as well. We want to make sure that we're not taking unnecessary time getting people on board. Because if you have a good applicant, believe me, we're not the only ones that they apply with. So instead of us losing our applicants to other agencies, we plan to accelerate that program so we can get our good applicants on board as soon as possible. We plan to do some pre-class work so that our officers don't have to wait to the academy to get all of their training. We hire them as they're waiting to go to school and give them also give them various types of pre-class work that they can get done. That makes their recruitment academy training a shorter period of time when we can get them out on the street. We plan to continue to travel, use our college graduates that are in the police department, who graduate from various schools, recruit them to go on recruitment trips so that they can talk to individuals that are in these various schools as an alum to talk to them about their experience as a police officer and utilize them to recruit. So it's kind of a force multiplier to get all of our officers involved in the recruiting process. And we also plan to continue to rebrand the organization, the best in blue. What does that really mean? What does our community members want from us? And how do we ensure that we're not just the best here in this area, but that we're on the national stage as a competitive organization? And with that said, I do want to also give you a few tips. How can you help us? Don't be a victim. Don't leave cars running or leave keys in the cars. As the weather changes, that is a common theme. Everybody thinks it's not going to happen to me. When you go warm that car up and it's in the driveway or something, and you go back in the house to get that hot cup of coffee, you're going to need it because you're going to be standing outside in the driveway without your car. So don't leave valuables in cars, especially handguns. And don't let your friends or family members be victims. Take the information that we're giving you today and take it out to your family, members of your neighborhood, and your friends. Recruit for the Memphis Police Department. As we talk about the fact that we're giving out incentives, some of these incentives are going to be epic and they're going to be sizable incentives. So encourage individuals that you know that are looking for criminal justice careers to join us. Do something positive in your community, like Neighborhood Watch groups. Mentor youth. Read to children. A lot of our incarcerated young people have reading issues, dyslexia issues. A lot of them are sort of products of their environment. And sometimes that interaction between, you know, adults and helping them and mentoring them helps keep them from going in a direction that, you know, will send them into our criminal justice system. We want to approach the criminal justice ecosystem, so to speak, from a holistic standpoint. If we can prevent crime and keep our young people from entering into crime, then we don't have to arrest them. We don't have to put them in the system. So we need to do some work on the front end as well. And various types of projects that are going on in your neighborhood, believe it or not, cleanup projects are a great deterrent for crime. You know, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. How many of you have heard of that? It's called SECTED. Yes, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Make sure you have your lighting situated in your community. Make sure that you don't have shrubs that cover your windows and your doors. Just make sure that that environment is safe. And if you would like somebody to come out to your community to teach crime prevention through environmental design, we can do that. And with that said, the mayor would like for you to know, and I always have to make sure I say what Jim Strickland wants you to hear, that what we're doing citywide is we're rebuilding the Memphis Police Department, positively affecting more young people, reducing recidivism, increasing economic opportunity, and also punishing violent offenders. Unfortunately, we can't save everybody. But some of the individuals that commit crimes here in our city, unfortunately, on the Fourth of July, on that weekend, when our poor seven-year-old was a victim of gun violence. Unfortunately, the suspect that was arrested had a very lengthy record, had been charged also with homicide before, isn't that correct? And unfortunately, a young man lost his life. And these are the circumstances that bring us, you know, great heartache. So we will continue to work with our community members. I'll continue to work in the department. And I know I have the commitment of our leaders in the department for us to move the needle. If we have community members that come out like you, then we can move that needle and make a difference. So I thank you so much for your time, and I'm open to any questions. Is that what we want to do? Assistant Chief Crowe has the floor.
Good evening, everyone. And once again, thank you for letting us be here. So I have to start with this. There's two very special ladies in this room. And I thought about calling them out by name, but then I did not want to embarrass them in front of the whole group. But these two ladies recognized me from thirty years ago when I was a midnight shift patrol officer in this area. And they both came up, they spoke to me, they recognized me. I can't tell you how much that warms my heart. Because as you can imagine, back then, I had hair and it was not gray. So they could recognize me and would come speak to me. So the special ladies, thank y'all so very much. I do want to emphasize what the Shelby County Sheriff's Department has done for us, a tremendous partner, Sheriff Bonner, Chief Deputy Scott Wright, just incredible friends, incredible partners. Chief Davis spends a tremendous amount of time on the phone with them. Every time we ask the Sheriff's Department for assistance, whether it's manpower, whether it's equipment, they're always there for us. We talked about the Tennessee Highway Patrol. I cannot tell you what a great meeting it was between the new Colonel. He's only been a Colonel on the Highway Patrol for the last six months. It was a great conversation, great dialogue. I do anticipate great things coming from that. He feels our pain. He realizes that they do have more responsibility on the interstate system here in Shelby County and how they're going to help us. So I'd like to kind of have an interactive audience participation. So Rob, are you up there? Can you go back to Slide Two for us, please? Let me ask you this as we get this loaded up. If you are a retired law enforcement officer, regardless of the agency, would you stand up, please? Anyone? All right? Where? Well, thank you so very much. There is no way to describe the toll that a twenty-five or thirty-year career has on your mental health, your physical health, and your family's health. To survive with your health, we attended a funeral recently for a retired police officer. He'd been retired four years before he passed away. So anyone that works in law enforcement, we definitely want to thank them and support them. Now, for the rest of you, if you have a relative that is a Memphis police officer, raise your hand. Very good. Keep those hands up. If you have a friend that is a Memphis police officer, raise your hand. Very good. A neighbor? An associate? So that's who we need to be talking to. Any of you have a friend, a relative, or a neighbor that's a horrible person? Let me say it this way, a police officer that is a relative, friend, or neighbor that is a horrible person? They're not. They are our friends, our relatives, our neighbors. And I promise you, ninety-nine percent of them have the best intentions and work as hard as they can. It's like everything else. Instead of focusing on the ninety-nine percent good, sometimes we tend to focus on the one to two percent bad. So don't be that way. So we have the map up. What do you see when you see that map? I'm not going to say anything until somebody responds. Absolutely. So a Memphis police officer looks at that map. We divide the city into nine patrol precincts. Nine patrol precincts. A little history, when I came on the job, there were four precincts in the city. The city was almost just as big. Way too large of precincts, uncontrollable, unmanageable. So gradually, we upped it to nine, nine precincts. What precinct are we in right now? Absolutely, we're in Tillman Station. So I want you to think about this. The commander of Tillman Station is over here, Lieutenant Colonel Beasley. Help me with this, Lieutenant Colonel, because I'm doing it off the top of my head, but Tillman Station is about twenty-five square miles? And the residential population of Tillman Station is about sixty thousand? So he is the police chief of his own city. How many cities in the state of Tennessee are twenty-two square miles city limits with a residential population of sixty thousand? And then when you take, we have nine of those, nine of those. The largest one is Apple Farm Station. It's about eighty square miles with a residential population of a hundred and sixteen thousand people. So our hats off are to the precinct commanders. They really are their own police chief. And kudos to everyone that knows you're in Tillman Station. So let's go to the Slide Three, if you will, Rob. So I want to talk about the black line for a minute. And so let me preface it with this, crime is too high. It absolutely is. But I have been around long enough to see the cycles. So the black line represents Part One crime in the year 2006. So is there anybody in this room that was not in Memphis in 2006? One or two? So you get a little history lesson here. So somebody, go back to 2006. Mayor Harrington was the mayor. Mayor Harrington had just appointed Larry Godwin as police director. And he told Larry Godwin that crime was too high and to reduce it. So Director Godwin said, give me a little time to study it, and I will come up with a plan. One of the things Director Godwin looked at was our staffing. And our staffing in the year 2006, anybody want to guess? About two thousand officers. Director Godwin got permission to hire five hundred officers. We hired all five hundred in one year. Does anybody believe that? No, we did not. Because every year, there is attrition. So it took us from 2006 to about 2010, 2011 to hire five hundred officers. We maxed out at two thousand four hundred and eighty-two officers in the year 2010, 2011. If you go back to 2010, we had the lowest homicide rate since 1971. 2010, we had just over a hundred homicides. Ninety-one of those were classified as murders. But we had enough officers to do everything. Some of you old guys, help me, we had a unit called STEU, Special Traffic Enforcement Unit. And guess what their job was? Traffic enforcement. So we come forward to 2021. Chief Davis said it, last month, we dropped below two thousand officers. We just graduated a class that put us above two thousand. But we're still hovering with the same manpower we had in 2006. So the goal is to get manpower up. There's so many correlations that as manpower goes up, we're allowed to do special things with special units. We have increased staffing at the precincts. Overtime spending goes down. We're able to do a whole lot more community engagement. It's what we need to fulfill the request of the Memphis Police Department. Let me ask you this. What is happening in Tillman Station on August 28th?
Lights out.
Ooh.
Or lights on.
I didn't know that. That's good.
The community outreach, where they go out into the precincts, where they walk and they're talking to people.
Community walk. That's, you've got it, both of you have it. So everybody get your phone out and write that in your calendar. August 28th, starting at eight-thirty in the morning, Broad, First Baptist Broad on Broad Avenue. We're going to meet there, and we're going to walk through the Bean Hampton community. And it is a way of everyone signifying unity, unity for community and police, unity to stop gun violence. Let me ask you this, is that walk going to end on gun violence?
No.
But it's a start in the right direction. And it's about everyone getting together to do it together. Okay, so mark that calendar date down. Okay, so mark that calendar date down. Keep in mind that crime reduction is never going to be the police by itself. We all agree with that, or does anybody think the police will do it all by themselves?
No.
Have you ever built a stool with one leg on it? It will not hold weight. So it's the police, working with the community, working with the religious community, and working with businesses. Everything that Chief Davis said, it's everyone working together. So I'm going to ask one last favor, and then we'll turn it over to questions and answers. But I need everyone to get your phone out. Get your phone. Open up your internet. So whether it's Safari, Internet Explorer, but open up your internet and type this into it. Join, let's go to the last slide. Thank you, Rob. Find somebody to recruit for the Memphis Police Department. We need your help in two phases, recruitment, find us new officers, find us new friends, new relatives, new neighbors, and then help us retain officers. But that's the website, joinmpd.com. You now have it in your internet browser. Share that with somebody and recruit for us.
How about the Citizens Police Academy?
Yes, ma'am. So we're taking, we'll do another show of hands, we'll do another show of hands. How many people in the room have gone through the Memphis Citizens Police Academy? You should be our biggest recruiters. Absolutely. So Memphis Police Citizens Academy is hosted at each individual precinct. Applications are being taken right now at Tillman Station. Applications will be accepted until August the 20th. The class will meet one day a week for four hours a week. It's eight weeks long. It starts the second week of September. But if you want to get an idea of what training police officers go through, if you want to get an idea of what it takes to investigate a crime, you want to go to the Citizens Academy. And you cannot graduate from Citizens Academy until you conduct a ride along with a police officer. Yeah, you do not get a gun, and you do not get any way to help you. Well, I won't go there. But anyway, thank you for listening to me. We're going to turn it back over. Thank you, Assistant Chief Crowe. What we're going to do now, we're going to go to questions and answers. We have two wonderful staff members here that we couldn't do our jobs without, Liza Crichton and Ashley Hayes. They have wireless mics. Please be respectful of everyone in the room. We know, we would like to answer everyone's question that has one, but we want to be mindful of everyone's time. So we're going to start at the front of the room. If you would, raise your hand and say who the question is for, and hopefully we can give you a clear answer.
I'd like to thank you for being here, and welcome to Memphis. I have a family member who is a Memphis police officer, and one of the frustrations is that there's a lot of cars, and also that the cars are mechanically and technically deficient.
Chief, you can use that mic. So did he tell you how many Richmond officers have over you? I'm going to respond to that. You know, one beautiful thing about the fact that our city was selected for some of the American Rescue Act money is that we plan to invest in more cars for our officers. And we are actually talking about how do we have a safe driving campaign also? Because, you know, we have to be transparent and admit, well, we can do better with the equipment that we have. And the other thing is that the jurisdiction that I came from, we were privileged enough to have a take-home car program. And the surprise in the take-home car program was that the officers took care of those cars so well that the maintenance went down, the cost of maintenance went down on our vehicles annually. And the fleet managers were totally shocked. The cars were clean, the wheels were shiny, you know, and you didn't have to worry about getting in the car behind somebody else who left the Popeye's bag on the floorboard or whatever. So we are looking at not just bringing in new equipment, but working on how do we take care of the equipment that our taxpayers have invested in us.
And just to add to that, it takes money which comes through this body. One of the things about the take-home car program, to the point is, one, you get those officers' cars parked out on the street in those neighborhoods. This body, during this year's budget season, amended its CIP budget from the mayor's proposal, added an additional $1 million to begin the take-home car program. The city of Memphis will receive over a period of two years, we've already received the first funds of $83 million as the American Rescue Plan Act under President Biden. You'll see that the president had a press conference about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, announcing public safety initiatives. And so we certainly plan to support a proposal that will expand the take-home car program in a very robust way. So we hope to do that. It takes seven votes on the council, so if you want to know what you can do, email your council members, all 13 of us, telling them that you support that program.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Burges. I'm in Tillman, 525, and I'd like to know who all is it going to take to untie the hands of our officers and let them do their job? I could pass the mic over to Assistant Chief Crowe, but, you know, our work is, you know, very complex, but I can tell you that the commanders in the Memphis Police Department do not tell our officers not to do their job, and we support them doing their job as well. So our message, and our message is always clear, right now, we are looking to arrest anybody that would do harm and threaten public safety. We are also looking to make sure that our officers are out on the street and feeling comfortable and confident in doing traffic. So if their hands are tied, or if they feel like their hands are tied, it's not the police department.
Well, it's the fact that if they light somebody up to stop them, they stop them, but when they go to...
Talk to them, they take off, and they're not allowed to chase them. I mean, they can't, you know, they can't stop them. Well, I'm going to tell you, yeah, we have policies, and really, our policies are best practices, and I'm going to tell you why they're best practices. And I shared this earlier, that there's nothing worse than going and being a part of a deposition where an officer chased somebody for speeding and a 16-year-old was decapitated in the process. Sometimes, the high rates of speed that our officers would have to be involved in, and the danger that's involved in the public safety, it's not worth it. We're working on ways to be able to get those individuals without chasing them down the road and endangering other people. But I understand, it's frustrating, because on Saturdays, I ride the freeways out in this uniform, and when people are racing past me and jumping in and out, they're causing all kinds of fear on the roads. And some people aren't skilled enough to navigate that. So we know that is a concern. We're trying to work on ways that we can safely address that, prosecute those individuals, prosecute those individuals without putting the public at large in danger. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Chester Berry here from First Baptist Lauderdale, and my entire family is law enforcement itself. I applaud each and every one of these people I know. You couldn't lie better than choosing. He's a little crazy, but we love him. I want to ask this question about the recruiting. Is there any possible way to include the paying or the forgiveness of student loans to partner that with recruiting? One of the biggest problems we've got with our young people is those student loans. I believe you can get some quality candidates, if there's some way, Steve Cohen, or somebody in the federal government, or whatever. If we can partner the forgiveness of student loans with recruiting, I think it might work.
Great idea.
Thank you, Pastor. We absolutely agree with you. So our city human resources, Chief Alex Smith has started a student loan repayment assistance fund. It's certainly not wiping out student loans, but it is assisting with repaying of student loans. So it is in place. We would love to see it to be more and higher, because here's the reality, whatever it takes to recruit quality people is what we want to do.
And on top of that, the PST investment program. For PSTs, we also have a college tuition reimbursement program, so you can be a member of the PST program, and we can pay for your college at the same time. So we have programs, not that we don't need to do more, but we are doing everything we can, and we're always open ideas of what more we can do.
Hi, my name is Kathy Chapman. I live in the Village at 4th or 2nd Lane. I also have a medical office for the last 28 years at 8143 Walnut Grove Road, just east of Germantown Parkway. For many years, and this is related to speed and drag racing, we've had substantial issues with injuries, tow cars, damaged property, and about a month ago, two deaths related to drag racing at 114 miles per hour over that area. Periodically, we get police officers that will come on our quest to be there. Now, we've gotten approval for a light over Timber Creek there, but we've been told and delayed and delayed, it has to be with federal funding. This, to me, is serious enough, that it needs to be something that the city council needs to address and the mayor's action, because it's a continued problem, we've had wrecks since then, it's been serious. I've had injuries on my own medical patients because of that area, and I've had problems with my staff having cars towed, and it's just something that's been neglected for a long period of time.
I couldn't agree more. Two days ago, I introduced a resolution to fund a comprehensive traffic safety study of up to $600,000 for the entire area incorporated in Cordova, and it was passed with unanimous vote, and we'll go to the floor next week. So the mayor will sign that in two weeks, and then we'll begin a comprehensive traffic study that should inform, looking at all traffic calming and traffic safety that we can do, not only just for certain areas, but the entire area. After that, Willie Brooks, who's the county commissioner representing unincorporated areas of Cordova, agreed to join that study so that we can take an entire look, because when you push traffic off of one street, it only goes to another. And the intent is to inform with data a capital plan in order to reduce that, those issues. The other thing this council's done is that it has fully funded 95, I think we're looking at the other last option, but 100% of the requested and approved speed humps that are in pre-construction have funding to go in. I know that's, for some of you who've probably requested speed humps, I think there's something like 4,500 to 5,000 requests for speed humps a year. So it's a lot to get through, but we've fully funded every speed hop to be built this year. And then as far as the light, the traffic lights, our intent is to fund that in Cordova through this traffic study.
In the meantime, could you put up a big banner across the AgriCenter, where it says "Slow Down Memphis, Please," because the speed limit goes from 55, and people are usually going 80 or more, to 45, and they continue to blast through there on a regular basis. So please put at least a banner, that's the thing.
I know that spot well. I've been begging for speed traps for several years now. In my six-year on council, I finally saw speed traps for the first time in the city of Memphis this past Monday. I saw three of them. And we've had them out on the interstate, you'll see the presence because of the shootings, but I think it's something that's psychologically important, not only practically important, is because if we go out on Poplar Avenue and we start driving, as soon as you pass into Germantown, the first thing you do is you look your speedometer, make sure you're not going 45 miles an hour, because you're going to get carried over. I mean, there's a psychological impact to that. If you can't get away with going 5 miles an hour or over, you can't get away with more serious things. And it's a philosophy in the police scene called broken windows theory, which is a controversy to it, but I'm a subscriber of it, I believe in it, and I would like to see us do more of it in Memphis, but again, it goes back to manpower over and over again. But I think it's something we should be pursuing, that if you're going to break the law, even the smallest ones, we're going to hold you accountable in Memphis.
My name is Flip Frisbee, and I live in this area, and I'm going to direct this toward the ladies especially. If you, on the Nextdoor Act, if you're seeing that ladies are becoming more victims in shopping centers and gas stations, be very, very vigilant if you go get gas by yourself, if you've got somebody else in your household, get them to do it for you. If there's plenty of gas stations around, it won't take long. But I could, it's just frightening to me that in the middle of the day, that people will rob somebody and take their car in a gas station. So be vigilant and get somebody to help you. And if you're by yourself, maybe get a neighbor to go get your gas. But just anything to slow down this crime and not be a victim. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, I appreciate that. I think that goes for not just our ladies, but all of our, people should just pay attention all the time. Sometimes we walk around with our head up in the cloud like it's not going to happen to me, but it's important to be aware of your surroundings and cognizant of the time of day that you go to and from, and the individuals that are in, and not to scare anybody, but it's important for us to take care of ourselves by being vigilant and being observant.
My name is Nick Gotten, and I only live a block from here, so I know what I speak. Chief Davis mentioned earlier about drag racing, and it's been brought up a couple times since then. But we live in one of probably the most used drag racing strips. That's from Poplar down to Walnut Road, and then Goodlett to Highland. Those two strips go day and night, and you hear the mufflers so loud, they're crying. If you want to catch some budding criminals, that would be a good place to start. You'd radar there day and night, and I'll tell you, it's going to be really great to get those people off the street.
Thank you for that. And, you know, just the information that we are getting tonight about specific locations helps us to be more focused too in those areas. So our staff is here, we're taking some notes, I see they're taking copious notes over there. So we plan to at least initiate some operations, and even though we're always, you know, stressed with staff, and we do have room to do some things, to implement, you know, some focus types of initiatives, so thank you for that, sir.
And I'll piggyback on that. If, for those of you in the audience who don't know what we have passed in the legislative side, I don't want to blame our news media for not covering as much as they should have. But in response, we have listened to your concerns and complaints, we have the same ones too. So we have passed, thank you to the hard work of Chief Wright, we've passed two ordinances for, one for mufflers with excessive noise and muffler cutouts, and we just recently passed a drag racing ordinance, which local ordinances don't quite have the teeth of state law. And I just wanted to recognize who stepped out, but State Rep. Johnny Gillespie took our request, and as a freshman legislator, pushed the Drag Racing Bill through the House and the state. The governor signed it two weeks ago, which increased drag racing from a Class B to a Class A misdemeanor, which can be up to one year in prison, and seizure of vehicle. And I can, I believe I speak for you. I believe I speak for my two colleagues sitting on the stage with me, that we fully support seizure of vehicles. Because... Because then they will understand that they are not going to drag race on our streets. And it's not just our interstate systems anymore. It's Highlands, Perkins, it's Goodlett, it's Graham. And it's in every corner, it's in every district and we get complaints about it. No one is immune to this, but they're using these vehicles as deadly weapons. And if I use a firearm and a deadly weapon, my gun is going to be seized. And I believe that these vehicles should be seized because they're being used in the exact same manner. So we will do everything that we can on legislative side to give, to arm our police officers with what they can do to stop this reckless and dangerous behavior.
What's the muffler thing that you're talking, what's the muffler legislation?
The muffler is now a mandatory court appearance. So for people that have an older car and their muffler creates excessive noise, we created a muffler exchange program where they can go to an auto body shop and get the work done for free. What we are trying to target is the aftermarket modifications to these vehicles that intentionally make their vehicles loud to disrupt everyone's quality of life. You can't sit on your back porch and enjoy an evening with your spouse or your kids because of these loud noises we intend to put a stop to.
Good deal.
My name is Katie Beck and I live in Laurel Way and I want to start by telling you how much I appreciate and respect the job that I know you do every day. My father's Bill Oldham, he was on the NPB for 28 years and he rode through the ranks, patrolman all the way to what was director at the time, retired from there and then was sheriff of Shelby County for eight years. So I absolutely respect and appreciate everything you guys do. And just wanted to piggyback on it, know that you were going to be adding on to the drag race, but wanted to make sure that you were aware of also that traffic Perkins from Poplar to Walnut Grove is constant for the drag racing. So I was just wanting to add that into the drag racing information. Thank you all so much for being there.
Thank you for being the daughter of a police officer.
She didn't have a choice. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, I'm Bill O'Brien. Anyway, I was wondering your opinion on Governor Lee's open carry. Concealed carry, that is, with no permit. I know it's not real popular amongst the police forces. However, the bad guys don't sign up to anything.
Right.
So how do you feel?
Well, we're a little concerned about that. You know, it really changes the game for, especially for communities that experience excessive gun violence. So when officers respond to those locations, you know, in the past, they had various laws that provided, you know, the ability to ensure their safety, you know. We trained them about Terry versus Ohio and all of the other precedent laws. But this new legislation causes us to sort of recalibrate on how we approach individuals with weapons. And we know, and as Chief Crowe says, that this law had unintended consequences. Even though it may have been a law that was passed with the intention of getting Second Amendment right, you know, individuals the ability to wear their weapons, you know, out and exposed. It also provided the opportunity for other, you know, other individuals that have egregious intent to have weapons without officers being able to question them, especially in high crime areas where we would typically be suspect. So it brings about a lot of concern, not just for us as leaders, but also for those officers who have to deal with those situations. And we have, that's why our police attorney is here, Zay Salim, he is helping navigate us through these new laws to make sure that our officers stay safe and that they are within the confines of the law when they approach individuals. So I know Chief Crowe is passionate about it. You got something to say?
Oh, you summed it up really well. So we have to keep in mind that the bad guys have been doing permitless carry for a long time. But the officers had the ability to stop someone that they saw walking down the street with a firearm. The law allowed to stop, investigate and ask, "Do you have your permit?" So let me ask you this question. If somebody walked in front of your house today with a pistol sticking out of their pocket, a pistol sticking out of their belt, what would you do? Don't call us because it's not illegal. So that's the situation officers face. If they're driving down the street, whether it's your neighborhood or an area that has a higher crime rate and they see somebody with a pistol sticking out of their pocket, they cannot stop and ask them to see their permit because they're not required to carry a permit.
Call my neighbors and say, "You better watch them, see where they're going."
So certainly if they're involved in other criminal activity, but it's not criminal activity now permitless carry. Of course, you know, there were three restrictions put on that. So age limit, everybody know what the age is?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So a 15-year-old cannot walk down the street with a pistol. Two, you must be lawfully possessing the firearm. So this did not give convicted felons the right. But let me ask you this, an officer is driving down the street, how does he know if he's a convicted felon? He doesn't. Unless, of course, it's that odd situation where he may have been in court. Correct. From passing a counter, you will. But odds are, it's not going to happen. So age limit, 21 or older, there's an exception there for a kid in military. Lawfully possess the firearm, so it can't be a stolen firearm. Convicted felons do not have the right to carry a firearm under this. And you must be somewhere where you are lawfully present. So this does not give anyone the right to carry a gun inside of school under permitless carry. But you could walk up and down the sidewalk in front of the school with a pistol in your pocket as long as you're 21. So sir, I know I probably didn't answer your question. I think it's something that everyone's going to have to watch and see what the unintended consequences of it is. We would tell anyone, Tennessee's had a permit system in place since the late 90s. So you have been able to get a permit to carry a handgun in the state of Tennessee since the late 90s. What did it require? Training. Training. It absolutely did. So if you're interested in carrying a handgun, why not go get the training and get the permit?
Hey, my name's Susan Smith and my question is about tinted car windows, blackout tinted windows. I feel like I'm seeing more and more of them all the time and I find it very unnerving just walking down the street and have a car slowly drive by me with windows where you can't see the driver. And I can't imagine being a police officer and having to approach a car that has blackout windows. You don't know the guns pointing at you or what's going on behind the windows. But I'm wondering what the laws are because I thought that those windows were illegal. And I'm wondering if you can't, if they're speeding off and you can't catch them, like you were saying, we don't want to get into high-speed chase, can you, can you at least find or close down the operations that are tinting these windows that dark?
So we may have to collectively answer this one for you. So Tennessee law is a 30%, so it cannot block out more than 70% of the light. The question is, how does an officer measure that on the side of the road? All right? So there are tent meters, UV meters. We don't have enough that every single officer can have them in their car. We certainly do write tickets for tent violation. We certainly stop cars for tent violation and conduct a further investigation from it. Officers do not like walking up on dark tinted windows. Currently, there's no state law, there's no city ordinance that prohibits companies from putting darker tints on your windows. The prohibition is for the driver driving the car. And yes, we would not want to be in a vehicle pursuit on the only charge we have would be a window tint violation. There's too much liability for it. Gentlemen?
That sounds like an idea for a city ordinance. I'm not sure it'll pass. Y'all let us know how much those tent meters cost and we can fund that money too.
Thank you.
Resudivism. Well, thank y'all for all you do. This may be more to the left side podium, but if it costs 50,000 to incarcerate someone for a year, I have tried, this church has a support for ministry that tries to help ex-convs who have paid their debt to get another job, to get hired, some training, economic training and money handling and other training. And I've gone to two of my hospitals and asked, "Would y'all consider hiring an ex-conv? For laundry, for food purposes, janitor?" "Oh, no, we couldn't take the chance that they might steal from one of our patients." Money talks. If they, if 10%, I don't know, five, 15 of their wages was paid by the government and they could get employees for 85% or whatever that they would normally have to pay, they change their mind. Even if it's a trial, roll the dice and if the ex-conv gets an even number, okay, he's in the program. Odd number, sorry. And compare, you know, give it a year, see, something. I mean, they can't get a job, they want to support their family, the only way they've ever learned is stealing or something. So of course, they go back to it. Would there be any opinions of the possibility of considering some way to prevent this recycling back into prison, back into crime that keeps this cycle going?
Yes. So it's incredibly complex. It seems like a simple thing, right? Like the prison-to-school pipeline or school-to-prison pipeline, right? You know, recidivism. It seems like incredibly simple thing when dressed, but it's unbelievably complex and it's something that unfortunately takes support from all levels of government. We need, you know, we need nonviolent criminal reform. We need recidivism support from the federal government. We need juvenile justice reform. We need to stop ACIS, which are acute childhood traumas. We need money to do that. We also need intervention programs. The council passed and seated the $2 million program called the group violence intervention program, which is not only just about intervention, it's about interruption. There was a case last week where there was an act of gun violence and literally the interventionist went to the individual's house, helped pack them up and move them out of the neighborhood within 12 hours so that the immediate response wasn't to retaliate against that person. And so this is, talks about the engagement of the community. The city of Memphis has a program called Wows and Mann University where it's exactly that. It's reentry programs where we can support people through, at least from prison probation pool, with jobs and skill training. And the end result is job placement through some sort of vocational skill or associate bachelor's degree. And then on top of that, we have the public service board, which is another program that is addressing that. But we'll tell you, one of the things for Shelby County, not to digress the conversation that makes it incredibly difficult, is that we have two forms of government. We have the Shelby County government, which runs the jails and the DA's office and the Shelby County Sheriff's Department. And then you have the city of Memphis, who has its budget and its own set of responsibilities. And so it's incredibly difficult to have the two governments talking to each other and figuring out who's going to fund what and be responsible for those roles. A really good example of what wraparound services would look like, and I'll wrap this up really quickly, is look at the Memphis City Mission downtown. What they realize when they take somebody off the street with emergency shelter is that it's almost nearly impossible to get someone from emergency shelter to permanent housing and a job when the first thing they have to do is leave the emergency shelter and go across town for detox counseling services. So they acquired property and created a campus and they can take someone from emergency services, emergency shelter, through counseling, detox, job training, job placement and transitional to permanent housing without ever having to leave that campus. Government should work the same way. So it makes no sense that we've got two separate governments doing the same thing and/or different things and not talking to each other inside of us. So if you want to fix the problem with your local government, you should really think about consolidating.
I'm Kathy Beach and I am a Belene resident. I have a question about recruiting. I understand there is a residence requirement, residency requirement for Memphis police officers. If that were taken away, wouldn't your opportunities to hire more policemen be broadening greatly?
Yes. And I know there are opinions about that. There are very strong opinions about that. But what I will say is that police officers are people. They have families, they have children and they want the quality of life and they want, you know, to be able to work and be dedicated to their city that they love and serve. But at the same time, they want the same types of schools and environment for, you know, for their families too. So, you know, that's a hard subject and right now, I am supportive of, you know, the discussion and the opportunities to discuss more about, you know, what that potentially look like. But right now, I think it's Shelby County, all of our officers have to live in, within Shelby County. And, you know, that's what it is right now. I'm interested to see what my council members have.
Should let the people decide themselves.
Again, if you are unaware, I'm going to blame this on our news media, probably you, Bill Tree. But in late 2019, with help of my colleague, Councilor Morgan, we passed an ordinance which would have taken a referendum to the voters. And we had all kinds of compromise. We narrowed it down to 50 miles. We said we would establish a take-home car program if you live within the city of Memphis. We had home buyer assistance and we had the support of nine of our colleagues, ten. And we had an election and we had a new group of colleagues and they repealed and undid what we did in 2019. So what they did was they took away your voice. They took away your chance to decide. If you are in an emergency situation, if someone is breaking into your house, if you've called the fire department or the paramedics and you have a very serious situation, do you care where that public safety officer lives? Or do you want him just to save your life? We know, we had our former Director Mike Rollings do everything short of beg to have this option and it was taken away from the voters. So again, we would ask you to reach out to all of your Memphis city council representatives and ask them to let the voters decide on where they want their police and fire to live with. Because we know for a fact that it helps us recruit.
And to follow up on that, I think that was one of the darkest legislative days of the time that I've been on council, just in terms of the loss and having that reversal. So I have, in six years of giving speeches and all over the place, I have only kind of gotten choked up twice. Y'all saw it here tonight, just overwhelmed by the presence that y'all had and what brought out here in terms of frustration and anger and fear and the difficulties that you experienced. And I think that got to me earlier. And then also just the unbelievable, I think, debate or lack of empathy we had at the council that day to hear the voice of people to decide this issue. It's the same thing Councilman Calis said. I don't care where an officer lays their head at night, as long as their heart's in the right place and their butt's going to get the job done. And this, this is what I did to already, sometimes you hear about the state preempting Memphis's ordinances, resolutions, or referendums. This is an instance where I think it would be good for the state to preempt us. They're debating this right now. It passed the Senate, it went to summer study session for the House and they're going to take up the debate again next year where they may open up those residency restrictions. And so we'll go from a population of 940,000 eligible to about 1.35 million and increase our recruiting pool by about 40%. And it won't do everything, but it is a big, easy, three-step in the right direction.
I'll add, I'll add one thing that occurred in that debate that really rubbed me in the wrong way, is this idea that police don't prevent crime, they show up after. Yes, there are crimes of opportunity that occur. There are things that are just outside of control of the police department. But... But go tell somebody who's a victim of crime that could have been prevented if we had more people working investigative services, or more officers out making arrests, and so you've got violent offenders that are creating multiple crimes because we can't get through the paperwork, or our officers are so tired they can't see straight, right? So, when somebody says that to you, respond that way. Respond that way. Police absolutely can prevent crime.
My name is Lynn Bug, I live on Walnut Grove Road across from Galway Golf Course. And first of all, thank you all for all the work that you've done. My issue is speeding, and, um, you've given me great hope in, in some of the things that you've shared about drag racing, et cetera. Um, and I'm very heartened by the Slow Down Memphis campaign. However, living on Walnut Grove, and I think many of you notice if you're living near Poplar or on this other, you know, route corridor that we've mentioned tonight, the speed limit is forty miles an hour. I think that average speed is more like sixty or sixty-five. And, um, and I'm very concerned about drag racing too, but every day I see cars going at a rate of speed that is dangerous and reckless. What is being done to promote the, and maybe in a mass media way, the Slow Down Memphis campaign? And is there a way that as citizens, particularly on corridors like mine, that we can help support it? We support those of you who are running for office with yard signs, is there a way that we can help spread the message and get the word out to more citizens to be more responsible, and just because someone's doing sixty-five doesn't mean that you should do sixty-five?
Well, I'll respond to, to that first. I certainly welcome any, um, advertisement, communication from community members. We plan to do a full-fledged, um, media campaign. Also, we plan to incorporate the city's communications center so that we can get the word out about Slow Down Memphis. But you're absolutely right, there's nothing like seeing signs, you know, from community members who are fed up to basically say, "Slow down." Sometimes when you're riding through neighborhoods and you see a sign that says "children playing," it makes you think twice. So, I think just having that message and the volume coming from the community members makes a difference. We'd be willing to help fund some of the signs, so, I just think that this is something that is serious enough for us to get the message out that community members want safe roadways. We certainly have, like I said, been taking notes. We plan to be very visible in some of these areas. We do have the opportunity to do, um, you know, have radar run, we, we just need to let, let folks know when we're out there running radar, it's not, because we don't have anything else to do, and we're picking on the community. We're out there so that we can show these other individuals that are in your neighborhood that they're not gonna be able to continue to terrorize the community. And we talked a little bit about seizing vehicles, we've had those conversations in-house, and we're actually working with our legal liaison, our police attorney, on how do we leverage some of these laws so that we can hit people where they hurt when they use their vehicles as weapons, so thank you.
My name is Bruce Hopkins, welcome to Memphis Chief Davis. Um, I was carjacked November ninth last year by five armed masked perpetrators at Mount Aride and Poplar, if you did well. It was a horrible, horrible experience. Unfortunately, I know four other people that have had similar experiences between Highland and, uh, Mount Aride and White Station Road in the past, Nelson's last member. My question is this, uh, the exxon appeared by Oak Court Mall in my office for many years, was at First Horizon in Ontario, Southern, and for several years going back, let's say ten years, there have been shootings, there have been robberies, there's just been horrible stuff that goes on there. And that exxon, in the past two weeks, has had six or seven carjackings, uh, up here at Oak Court Mall, and all these perpetrators are coming out of Oak Court Mall. I had been in Oak Court Mall in two years, but I'm scared to death because of what goes on. So, living in this neighborhood of Belene, and I have children who live in, in the village, uh, and have grandchildren, you know, I'm scared to death. And I'm someone who's very involved with the community and loves Memphis and wants what's best, so, this really isn't a question, it's just a statement, but I'm very concerned about Oak Court Mall and what goes on there. Thank you.
And, um, you know, since I've been here, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the management at Oak Court Mall. I know that our officers work secondary employment. How the, how the secondary employment, they're moonlighting, you know, and how that, how that's, um, working and how effective that's working is something that we will need to, um, talk about as well, because even though they are working secondary employment, they're still representing the Memphis Police Department, and we want their presence to be effective in these different locations. I visited that mall for the first time on Saturday, I stumbled on it, you know, because it's kind of hidden, you don't just, you know, see it easily. And I went inside, and the, um, retail lady was telling me that we had officers that worked there and, and how they were so nice and everything, but it just make, it just makes me wonder what's going on over there at the mall that we're still having these types of, um, incidents, so, we'll be looking into that. Thank you, and I'm, I'm very sorry to hear about your unfortunate circumstances, glad you, I'm glad you're doing okay.
It, it does feel like something's changed in the last six months or a year. Uh, for the first time this week, my wife and I, um, started having discussions about, you know, how to protect yourself at gas stations. Uh, she invited me to a grocery store, not to push the cart around, but to watch her back, and, you know, it was a sobering moment. And, um, one of the things, we were, Deputy Assistant Crowe, he's had about five different titles, I don't know if you remember, he's Assistant Chief Crowe, was talking about earlier, was that walk that we were doing through Beahanton in August, and one of the themes of these walks that we've had throughout the city is that we're encouraging people, if you see something, say something. And it's kind of a new motto, a message, that we're really trying to push out into the community, uh, and it's so important, because one of the biggest difficulties we have fighting crime in Memphis is community input, and, uh, people know who are committing these carjackings. All these carjackings and robberies and things that are going on at the grocery stores and the gas stations that you're hearing about, those are not, uh, I guess, new criminals in each incident, so those are careers that are working the system, and it really, and people know who are committing those crimes, and we need them to step up, we need them to speak out, and then we can bring them to justice. And I don't, um, I understand and don't blame people necessarily for being afraid. We had done a, a poor job of witness protection in the city of Memphis over the years, and there's a new program that was announced, uh, in terms of witness protection, there's a great article in the paper, uh, the name is getting me at the moment, but my wife and I immediately looked at each other, and we'll try to, I'll try to support it from my seat in the city of Memphis, but it's something I'm gonna personally get to as well. Ben Adams and the Crime Commission can give you more information on it. Uh, but if you see something, say something, and that includes speeding, feel free to email us any of these times that you see excess speeding, we will take every speech trap location and work with the police department to, to get people out there. Um, but that's also a message we're trying to push throughout the community as well. Thank you.
The, the sad sobering fact is the majority of these crimes are being created, are, are being perpetrated by teenagers. Juvenile. Juvenile. Um, I mean, we're gonna talk about the heartbreaking thing, it's that they're thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids. You have a thirty-two-year-old man putting a gun in the hands of a fifteen-year-old kid and telling him that's how you live life. Uh, we talk about police, but the sobering moment is, is like we're losing communities. It's, it's really, the time that I've spent on Memphis City Council has been so impactful to my perspective on life, it's really hard to put it into words. Um, you spend time talking to these pastors, talking to these community workers, and you really get out of the bubble and you understand, like, the intensity in which they live their lives. There are kids in Beahanton that have never seen the Mississippi River, they've never been to the zoo, so how could they possibly have a dream of anything more? These gang members are turning children into child soldiers. They believe that their only way out, their only way to fit in, their only opportunity is carry a gun, join a crew, get paid, and that's the lifestyle. So, I know the channel here from me, but, but I'm gonna say it anyway, the truth of the matter is, is every time we talk about police officers on the ground, we have to talk about what we can do as a community to support you. If you're not out reading to somebody in junior achievement, if you're not at Boys and Girls Club, if you're not at RYMSA, if you're not using your time and/or your resources to support this community, then we're really never gonna get there. We're really never gonna get there.
I have a question. Thank you for doing this, this evening, and I, I want to express that I think a lot of people, just not here tonight, but all over in other parts, in other communities are equally concerned, so thank you for, um, expressing this. One of the things I wanted to ask about was, um, you mentioned that guns could be, if you had lawful property, you lived in three reasons, but if you have a business, can you post, do not bring a gun in, and can that person legally come into the business with a gun? If it's posted, no guns allowed.
If it's a private business, you can post that on your business that no weapons are allowed in your business. Absolutely. Thank you for that.
My name is Frank Avary of Grand Corral Goodwood. You've been chief, put you some deal on fines associated with speeding. According to the internet, if you get charged for speeding at forty-five miles an hour, the fine is seventy-seven dollars. That's not much at all. Did you make a change there?
You know, um, I was told about some fines that were like, I, I think they were like fifty dollars, I mean, it doesn't scare a person who's speeding or committing some type of offense to have to pay fifty dollars. Um, and that's extremely low, and, and I'm not here to, you know, upset the amount, but at the same time, if you write tickets, they should cap tip them, because the ticket is, the ticket is supposed to be corrective action, and we're not correcting, you know, the behavior of citizens, then we've, we've got a problem, we're just kind of going through emotions because that person's going right back out there and doing it over and over and over again. So, um, yeah, do you have anything to say about that, you know, the history of citations?
No, so you're spot on, keeping in mind that the fines are not set by the police officer, it's set by state law and by city ordinance, and I think the city ordinance is also governed by the state constitution is what it allows, and so, it's very difficult to change that fine. But yes, the same fine now is what we had thirty years ago, just has less effect.
The maximum financial penalty that the city can levy for just about any offense is fifty dollars, and that's, we're capped there. We'd have to change the state constitution to increase it.
This is David Yawn. I don't know if the mic's on, David Yawn. I have a brief, uh, technical clarification-type question. A while back, uh, the, the Memphis Police Department Communication System for Dispatch was, uh, bifurcated in the sense that if there was a felony committed in a precinct, uh, that it went out to the, uh, Crime Division, so to speak, I don't know the technical name, but it didn't necessarily broadcast on the spectrum of the, uh, Traffic Division, so there could be someone in traffic two blocks away from a felony being committed, and Crime Division's trying to do a drag net, and they, they might not be clued in, but they can also swarm and, and help in the drag net, and maybe that has been remedied so that there's more of a all-persons, uh, alert that goes out when a carjack and a holdup has occurred. That's more of a clarification plea.
Thank you for that. So, our Communications Bureau classifies calls by priority, and so, we consider a Priority Zero, any officer in the city of Memphis responds to a Priority Zero call. And Priority Zero calls are dispatched on every frequency in the city of Memphis. We have ten primary frequencies, so each precinct that you saw on the map has their own radio frequency, the Traffic Division has their own radio frequency, so a Priority Zero is broadcast on all ten frequencies. It's been that way for at least ten years. Now, the question becomes the Priority Zero versus Priority One versus Priority Two. When you get to Priority Three and Four calls, they're certainly not broadcast on all frequencies, but the Priority Zeros are, and then any time an officer responds to something like a carjacking, they put out a broadcast, and those broadcasts aren't put out citywide. Now, certainly, we don't put out a broadcast on every shoplifting that occurs, but the violent felonies do give a citywide broadcast.
Well, my name is Barry Miller, I live on, uh, by the Edgar Center in Padova, and I had the unfortunate experience Monday night of calling nine-one-one, my life was being threatened, and it was nine forty-five, I called three times, and finally, at twelve fifteen, the officers arrived. And I don't think that's, two and a half hours is not very good a response for, I ran off, I was hiding in my truck, um, and I've had previous experiences, about an hour to get, um, officers to respond, but two and a half hours on Monday night is not very good.
So, um, I'm just gonna try to guess what could have happened, and, uh, of course, um, our calls are dispatched, and Chief Crowe, he, he talked a little bit about priorities, and sometimes it just depends on the, the call nature, if there's an individual that's present, they'll ask a series of questions to determine the prioritization of the call. And I understand that when you're calling and you feel like your situation is an emergency, you want an officer there immediately. So, um, we'd like to find out exactly, you know, what was the nature of your call, and I know, um, you just told us that you called, but I'd like to take a deeper dive and to find out exactly what occurred with your call, because I need to talk to our Communications Director to find out, you know, did they dispatch a person? What was the priority, and why was the priority what it was? So, when we leave, I'd like to get your, your information.
I think one of the officers was a CIT, which we
A Crisis Intervention?
Yeah, we requested that same three, three weeks ago, the previous time.
Okay, so you had a similar call, you said three weeks ago, tracked today?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to get some information about that, so we can sort of drill down and find out what the issue is. Um, we talked about the fact that the police department is short, unfortunately, and I know my center is terribly short as well, their prioritization of calls, I think, is probably a little bit regular right now, but, um, we still want to be able to troubleshoot. Um, we're meeting with them right now for, um, just to, you know, talk to the dispatchers, figure out ways that we can get more communications dispatchers working, so if you know people that are interested, they don't want to wear a gun on their hips, and they want to be a, a dispatcher, we're hiring in that regard too. So, I would love to get your information. Thank you.
We'll do two more questions.
I guess I'm second to last, my name's Paul Lemay, I live, uh, on Goodlett, uh, have lived here for, on Goodlett for over ten years. Uh, in November, a car traveling at a very high rate of speed crossed oncoming traffic, jumped a curb, ran through my fence, hit a tree in my front yard, and thankfully, didn't run into my house. In May, a car traveling at a high rate of speed on Goodlett, jumped the tracks of Southern, hit a power pole, knocked out power for over a thousand residents, including this church that not even holds services on Sunday. Speeding on Goodlett is out of control. I appreciate broken windows, uh, policing, I think it should be enforced, because it's not just the speed, it's the property damage, and it's the criminals you will catch in the process. I appreciate the Memphis Police Department, I have family members who wear your uniform, I appreciate you very much, and I think it will help to get more criminals off the streets if we are following broken windows, uh, policies. Second, last point, would you support a city tax that makes these aftermarket parts Second, last point, would you support a city tax that makes these aftermarket parts on mufflers so expensive that they won't be installed? It affects people's decisions on how much they invest in their homes when they can't even sit in their backyards and enjoy their property.
I'll give the legislative last part, which is unfortunately we don't have that authority. That would rest with the state of Tennessee.
And the, the comment about Goodlett, I'm not sure if my staff, that you all are familiar with, but I'm sure you took, took that information down. Like I said, even with these other areas, these other corridors, we plan to have some visibility in that area. And like I said, what we don't want to do is just do one, we want to change the atmosphere, we want to change the climate so that we can bring some sustainable changes in our community. So be looking for us, and let, let your, your neighbors know, we'll be out there. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Oscar Adams. I know many of you on the City Council, and I appreciate y'all for being here today. And it's getting late, and thank you for this last question. This week, the mayor addressed the city on crime. He did mention the sad fact that there was a young child that was murdered on July 7th, or July 4th. But the, the other thing they mentioned was, they used the example of a criminal who was arrested for stealing a car, got out immediately, did it again, got out immediately, did it again. This was four times within a few months. The same individual was creating havoc across our community. And I think that does two things. One, when somebody's allowed to do that, everyone in their circle is aware that they got away with something multiple times, and that this is just as easy to do, and potentially you may not get away with it. But if you don't get away with it, don't worry about it, you're going to be back on the street shortly. And so that's, that's sort of what goes back to the broken window theory. The other thing is, they mentioned that this is our, you know, our system is allowing, you know, in, in many cases, it's, it's not a widespread problem, it's, it's a few individuals that really create havoc and a problem in the community. I know this is frustrating to you as police officers, it is to us in the community and in you at City Council, but nowhere in the mayor's speech did he address what they intended to do about this, or how do we address this, are these elected officials, they continue to allow, allow people like this to get out into our community, or is this something that, is, is something else broken in the system? Thank you.
Well, we do have some things broken in the system. Because our officers are very frustrated. The work that they do is, is arduous and is time-consuming, and, and it takes a lot of investigative work to put individuals in jail, especially those people that commit serious crimes. And to see them back out on the street, it becomes a joke. It becomes a joke, and, you know, for officers, it really just, you know, is disappointing for them. And we have been sending emails back and forth, and the mayor probably uses as an example because we've been sending emails to him to say, "Here's another one, and here's another one." You know, and it's three and four in a day where an individual is out committing another dangerous crime and has committed, you know, something even more serious last week, but out on the street. So we continue to be faithful to the work that we do, and we try to encourage our officers and motivate them, but they're getting tired of it as, as well. So I know our elected officials are here, and we will continue to have conversations. We have a very good relationship with our District Attorney General, and especially as we initiate these operations, and we're hoping that that conversation is going to transpire also with our judges. And, you know, everybody needs to be a part of wanting this sea change in the city of Memphis. And 20% of the people are committing 80% of the crime. And that's what we see over and over again, the same individuals committing these serious crimes. So thank you for that.
It's an absolute round killer for the officers who are, you know, working hard to make a good arrest, and that's, that's part of their purpose and mission of their work, and then for the community to see them that as well. And it, it's become an issue with our jail system. So jail's where you go once you've been arrested and before you've been convicted, prison's where you go after you've been convicted. And as I was talking about, something just changed over the last six or 12 months, and some is related to COVID and the new policies with the jail in regards to COVID, and how many people you can house in a certain area now, and trying to keep people separated for health and safety concerns. Well, one of the unintended consequences of that were people were getting out of jail immediately with little to no consequence for very serious actions. And it's, it's not only our adult jail system, it's also the juvenile jail system, which last time I was there, we had 11 14 to 17-year-olds that were in jail for first-degree murder. So 11 between the ages of 14, and again, this is jail, this is pre-conviction. And so when we, we don't want our juvenile jail to become a, a prison camp for gang recruitment. You know, so we, we do have to pay attention to that and try to keep the kids that we hooked up to reform and get back on the right track, even if they committed, you know, a car robbery or a nonviolent crime, or something like that, that we don't necessarily want to keep them side by side with some of the most violent people in the city. And so it's a difficult balance. The, the federal Justice Department got involved, and the Obama administration gave us a lot of guidelines, but I think some of the, it, it's often a pendulum. And I think some of those guidelines swung too far the other way in terms of leniency, and they learned how to abuse and get around the system. And there are three branches of government, legislative, executive, and the judicial. And a lot of times when we're talking about bail and bonding and trying to retain or, or set a high enough barrier for, for potentially dangerous or violent person not to get back on the streets again, it, it's the judge who has the most discretion. And we've got those elections coming up next year as well.
Before I, before I close it, I just wanted to let everybody know that if you want a yard sign, a Slow Down Memphis yard sign, our, our PIO is, is here, she sent me a text. She said, "Send an email to PIO@memphistn.gov." We can make this a campaign throughout the community. I know we lost a bunch of folks, but if y'all can reach out to them, we will also put this information on our website, and if you want to just kind of talk to her, that's her right there. That's her right there.
Again, I want to thank everybody for taking the time out of your evening and joining us. Again, a special thanks to Sacred Presbyterian Church for hosting, Dr. David Bowen for opening us with prayer. Special, special thanks to Chief Davis, Assistant Chief Crowe. In closing, look out for your neighbors. If you don't have a neighborhood watch group, be the leader that forms that one. And if you see, like Councilman Morgan said, if you see something, say something. And one last statement about the city that we would request is that you don't stop believing, that you don't give up on it. It's too good of the city, let it go. And for people who say, "Well, it's just gone down the tubes, and I'm just going to move out of here." We've got a lot of, we've got a lot to offer, and we can, we can correct this problem. So please continue to support your MPD. They would certainly appreciate your prayers every single day. And thank you so much again. God bless you.